Okay, the City of Franklin Council meeting. We're gonna start our committee meetings and tonight we've got two first reads. We've got one second read. So. So our first read is going to be ordinance twenty-four oh oh eight. Mr. Wolf?
I'd like to open the laws and ordinance committee meeting at six oh three. And I'll read this. An ordinance to adopt and revise New Franklin personnel, policies and procedures manual and declaring an emergency. I don't know anything about this.
All right.
So I don't have the manual.
Yeah, Chris did.
Chris did? Okay, well, I haven't. Don't say that.
Yeah, I can fill you in.
Sure.
The, uh, and the resolution, the ordinance kind of speaks to it. Uh, there was a personnel, uh, a policy manual that was in place from township days. And the first, um, review of that resulted in the adoption of the New Franklin, uh, policy in, in November twenty twenty. There wasn't, there weren't a whole lot of changes, but there were issues in there to, to, appeals would go to the trustees, et cetera, et cetera. Uh, and what we had determined to do was to try to do maybe a biannual review of the policy manual. We started on that, uh, in twenty twenty-three, uh, very intensive review, had all the departments involved, page by page, chapter by chapter. Uh, we had talked about it well in advance and asked people sort of flag sections of it that weren't working, as you know. Actually, the policy manual we adopted in twenty twenty, we had a consultant that worked with us on. Um, the, uh, so in any event, uh, what we came up with, uh, was, um, a variety of revisions. Almost, most of them procedural, most of them housekeeping, uh, reorganization of certain of the, uh, provisions. And a lot of it had to do specifically with the article, or chapter three, which relates to our, uh, employment and how we go about our hiring practices. We were, uh, you'll recall that, uh, that a few years back, the voters approved a charter amendment that, um, put in place the Personnel Advisory and Appeals Board instead of Civil Service. And that's been a, a real benefit to the city in terms of time saving, that relates to employment. Uh, but there's still the basic Ohio constitutional provisions, uh, that require that, uh, that, uh, all selections and all appointments and all promotions are to be made on merit and fitness. So, uh, that was all incorporated in twenty twenty. We had, we decided to move some of the things around. There really isn't much substantive in there. It's, uh, um, I mean, we could go page by page, but we did send out a red line and a final version of it. Uh, and, uh, there were a couple of additions, uh, based upon recent, um, changes in federal law. Specifically as it relates to pregnant workers, lactation breaks, so those provisions were added. Uh, our personnel pursuant to the charter, Personnel Advisory and Appeals Board then is called to, uh, we convened them, asked them to review these things, sent them to them in advance. Uh, we had a meeting, um, a week ago, I guess. Uh, time flies when you're having fun. Uh, and, uh, and they went through each one of the changes. Uh, and at the conclusion, they issued a recommendation, uh, for, uh, approval of the, uh, of the policy manual as amended. So that's what this ordinance is about. If the, you know, on one hand, well, we much agree after passing because it took us a year and had to do it. But that's not it. There's, there's, you know, there's not much operative change in there. So if you want to take more time, certainly feel free, but, uh, otherwise, uh, we'd be asking you to approve those changes and, and, uh, adopt the revised, uh, policy.
Is anyone, if you, anyone reviewed any questions?
I've read through it. I didn't have any major concerns, but by all means, if you want to review it yourself.
I would like to.
Most of the changes were grammatical or organization wise. Like, uh, Mayor said, they did add the Pregnant Worker Fairness Act, and then there was some slight changes to the holiday pay, um, stuff. But beyond that, it was mostly organizational and grammatical or some change.
How do you guys feel?
I have a problem if you need to take time or if you.
I'd like to have one more time if I could, just get a quick look at it. Okay? No problem.
Thank you. Thank you, and I apologize, I was out of state, so. Um, there is another ordinance, um, and that is twenty-four oh zero seven. An ordinance to amend art eighty fourteen of the New Franklin zoning code. So we.
Gotta wait for a public hearing.
Yes, and we've talked with, uh, Fred Greer, he's leading on this, uh, is, uh, for about ten days or so in the middle of August. So we're asking to set this for public hearing, uh, on, at, uh, on September fourth, which I think is our first meeting.
You got that date?
Yeah.
September fourth, six P M.
Yeah, six P M.
Yeah, so we can set that, we'll get it properly, uh, published, and, uh, Mr. Greer will be here to do a presentation to, uh, walk you through that.
Perfect. That's all there is for laws and ordinance since. So I'm gonna close that meeting at six oh seven P M.
Our next resolution is going to be twenty-four R fifty-two. Uh, Mr. Katz?
Thank you. We will open a Finance Committee meeting at six oh six with, uh, Resolution twenty-four R fifty-two. A resolution authorizing New Franklin to enter into agreements with eighty-three Construction and Ace Ready Mix LLC for the construction and installation of a salt storage bin and declaring that this resolution shall be effective immediately. So we're, most of us are aware of the situation down at the service yard, um, and in need for more storage for salt. We have to get more salt in, we don't really have anywhere to put it. Um, and I think Mr. Capler has come up with some wonderful ideas of how to manage that and make the yard a little bit better and, uh, take one of the, the smaller salt bin that we're currently using, empty that out and use that to store equipment, uh, so it'll be out of the weather. Uh, so the, um, the additional, the new salt bin would then, combined with what we already have there, will give us enough salt, uh, that if we have a, um, a major winter, we should be pretty good to get through it. Uh, of course, if it's a crazy winter, then everybody's gonna be in the same situation. Uh, but this, this should, uh, make us good and comfortable every year going into the season.
So I think one other thing that's fair to mention is we purchase our salt through the C E program, correct? And like, whenever you go to purchase in the C E, C E program, you have to commit to a certain allotment of salt this time of year. Actually, it was, I think, last month, you've got to commit to how much salt you're gonna buy for this upcoming winter. And you don't know what that number is. It's kind of someone may dart at the, the dartboard, and you're going off your, your knowledge of previous winters and hopefully you don't get thrown a curveball. That's, that's a great opportunity because you can buy salt and get salt at a cheaper price. The problem is, if you go over on your, your allotment, you've got to find someplace to store that salt. And you have a certain date to buy that salt by, and if you don't, they start, start, they start charging you storage charges on it, which accumulate rather quickly. One of the other things is, it's kind of an industry standard in the area now to have a year's worth of salt on the ground. Where that becomes a benefit is, whenever we start getting big snowstorms, everybody that don't have a year's worth of salt on the ground is not buying salt. You could wait weeks to get your salt to fill that up, and if you're either low or out of salt, you don't have anything to put on the roads. So I think it's just a good move to get to that point where you can keep that kind of a reserve on the ground. And as well, if I remember correctly, if we do end up with an overage on what we have to buy, you can move the equipment out and you've got another place to put the salt. I think that's a good move, you should have done it a while back. It was also understanding that we had at one time enough storage for years with the salt, but then that's when we took over the remainder of the roads, which essentially kind of doubled the amount of service we were providing, which increased the amount of salt we needed to maintain. And there was a savings that came along with that because we ran the county to provide the services and we're able to perform the services and turn a gate of cheaper costs in the county.
So it's a win-win?
Yes.
So this is going to be approximately sixty thousand, uh, for both, uh, contracts with the building and then with concrete barrier blocks and those with it.
Sixty thousand one seventy-five.
I was able to stop by the yard and Brian showed me what the plan was, and it, it looks like a really great idea and a layout. Uh, Brian, you were hoping the plans, when you got the schematics back, that you were able to, um, in this pledge, would be able to, um, build that just a little bit higher so the semi trucks could dump easy, or was that able to happen?
Yeah, this, this will be higher than the other one, for sure. I, I will have it probably four foot higher than the other one, so. And the other one's just, I could probably get away with two foot, but let's want more in a row of blocks to make sure, so.
You got quotes from other, another company as well, right?
Yeah, through Clear Stand, and they were almost double.
Perfect. Wait to hear, I already knew the answer.
Any other questions, comments? Comfortable waving three. Most Finance Committee at six oh ten.
All right, I think that covers what's on the agenda we're gonna get to tonight. Now, Mr. Schaefer, Resolution twenty-four R fifty-one, please.
I'm gonna open up the Community Development Committee at six oh eleven. This is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute the revised Summit County Intergovernmental Memorandum of Understanding for Job Creation and Retention and Tax Revenue Sharing and Declare it Emergency. This is a second reading, we had some questions that, uh, were emailed out, I really don't know how to answer here. Uh, I followed it up with a, another question I wanted to know who had to sign, uh, in Summit County. This is just Summit County, this doesn't have anything to do with Stark County, Wayne County or anything. Uh, what I got back was a, uh, a list of, and I shared it with the council, a list of the communities that had signed it back in two thousand seventeen. The only ones that had not signed it were Stowe and Princeville. But that's not an updated list, and assuming that everybody else is going through the process right now, I'll put it out to council and see if they've assigned it or not. So, uh, any questions or comments on?
So, yeah, I, I reviewed the information, I think it was Mr. Styles that had some questions, excuse me, some questions on that. And I shared the same concerns. Uh, the gentleman from the county, I'm trying to remember his name, but he, he addressed those questions, but his answer to the questions kind of, to me, contradicted what it says in the language, and that was my concern. Uh, my concern is with the work from home type scenario where a company, this is called Gojo, and I'm just throwing the name on a, a company in Akron. Let's say they decide they're gonna send fifty percent of their people to a remote work type environment. And if I read this correctly, Gojo could, the city of Akron could say, hey, our income taxes is substantially declined because this company sent this majority of this percentage of people to work remotely. And they can not just, if they all go to one community, but cumulatively, they could add those up to show a certain, there's thresholds, and they could show a certain threshold. I think it's that their, the threshold numbers are, if they're over three million, there's a certain percentage pay scale. And if there's, if it's under three million of, uh, people, then there's another type of payout that they, they pay on that. Uh, the, the answer we got back from the gentleman at the county said, this doesn't really pertain to work, uh, work from home type scenarios, but I, I just don't get that in reading the, the language. So I don't know, maybe we can do two different things. One is ask for a revised list of who has adopted these current changes. And I don't know, is there a deadline on this, will we have this on this?
I'm not aware of a deadline.
Okay, so I think maybe it's, maybe we ask for time on this, we reach back out to them, and I'd like for maybe you have a Teams or Zoom meeting with them, if a few of you like to attend. Then we can just have some, some dialogue and answer these and kind of vet that out before we agree to, to go into something. Does that just hate to see us get into something that has a negative impact on the sound of it?
If you have this, uh, David Lucas said, if you, if you have that Teams, if you have a majority of council or a majority of any committee, that would be, that would have to be a public hearing.
So we, we just keep, we'd limit to like three people, not on the same committee. So then we could, we could get away with that, and then you have, uh, a gentleman from the county on there, if you want, you're welcome to join there as well.
I, I've read it.
Okay.
And, uh, you know, sometimes you get into the legal east, and it's a little dangerous when you try to interpret that, particularly if you're not an attorney.
Right. And that's why I think I just.
I would just tell you that, that my reading of it is consistent with what Mr. Lucas said. But I'll defer to, you know, of course, council has the final say on this.
So you don't want to be part of the Teams reading?
I don't need, I don't feel the need to be.
Well, that's fine.
Yeah, yes.
So I'll reach out to him and be at, you know?
Sure.
Yeah, we can do something at the next meeting.
Yeah, we'll figure out, uh, a day and we can freshen the mood.
We'll figure out who will be in on the meeting, and then we can figure out what's, who the check schedule was.
And Mr. Powell, okay, I didn't need to be, I don't need to be critical of any of those comments. Um, and to some degree, because, you know, this is not my specific area of expertise, but this was, uh, this document was a result of a year's worth of meetings, uh, with, uh, most of those were, were down at Summit County Council chambers, uh, with the attorneys, uh, and with representatives from all the thirty-one townships, villages, uh, and cities. Uh, and so much of what's being discussed was vetted there. Uh, and, um, and I'm reasonably confident that, that those slots got reduced to writing in the, in the, you know, in the form that was, was intended. And it's consistent with what Mr. Lucas told us in that, but by all means, I, you know, I encourage council to, to satisfy yourselves in that regard.
Yeah, I think we just want to do our due diligence on this and just have that comfort level to where we agree with it.
Absolutely.
All right, so we'll ask for time on Resolution twenty-four R dash fifty-one, and we will close the Community Development Committee at, it looks like six seventeen.
All right, that will conclude our committee meetings. Uh, one thing we've been doing the last, uh, since, I think it was April, is we've started a program, we do a Citizen of the Month. And we had a nominee come in at the end of July, so this will be the July Citizen of the Month. And, uh, this person would be Laura Jo Hawk. Laura's been a thirty-two-year resident of New Franklin, she's married to Tony Hawk, who is a former council member. They've raised one son here in, in the New Franklin area. Uh, Tony is actually the one that got her involved with working with the Tudor House. And, uh, since then, she's, she's just taken off and been doing all kinds of things for us. She's very active in the Tudor House, she's helped with, uh, the city staff to start getting the, uh, the Tudor House getting, uh, that's their sponsor, the corporate sponsors and stuff, so she's kind of helped with that, uh, that initiative. She's been on the Conference of Plans Steering Committee, and then recently she's been writing, basically assisting the city in writing grants for a city where we've actually received at least one, is that correct?
Oh, several.
Several?
Yes.
So with, with that being said, I'd like to recognize Laura Jo Hawk as the July Citizen of the Month.
Thank you.
So you're eight when you came here, right? You've been here thirteen years.
Tony's like over the line. Yep.
Between us, two thorns.
Thank you.
Yeah, as you mentioned, uh, the, uh, because you're gonna have to speak. Yeah, but, well, tomorrow's a perfect example of, you know, I've cut out someone on marriage report because the Tudor House barbecue was tomorrow.
Hey, we'll see you all there.
Yeah, we'll see you all there. Uh, and, uh, all the various events that we were doing at the Tudor House, we just keep wanting to do more, we want to make it, do better. Uh, you know, we had the trains, we added, you know, a variety of different things on a, a regular basis. And how are we gonna pay for all this? And fortunately, Laura Jo has, uh, the expertise and the wealth of experience in this area. And so she's sat with us, Katie Smith involved as well, but it was Laura Jo who really put together, let me have my back seat, uh, the, uh, the plan for, to solicit sponsorship for all of our events. Uh, and she put the structure of that together. Uh, Akron Community Foundation will support events such as these. And, uh, Laura Jo put us in touch with them and went down for the first meeting with them, uh, and it was like it was old home week. Hey, Laura Jo, how you doing? You know, and so, you know, really, it's all about relationships, and she opened that door to us, uh, is, is working with us on, on trying to obtain additional grant funding, uh, and all with that smile on her face, so, uh, we're thrilled, and it's well, well deserved, and, uh, so now you get to speak.
Okay, so an hour?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Well, yeah, this is humbling and totally unacceptable, so thank you to the council. Um, I'm very, very proud to live in New Franklin, to raise my family in New Franklin. I'm very, very lucky that at this point in my nonprofit, uh, career, that I can, you know, choose projects that interest me and work with people that inspire me. I'm very, very grateful to my husband, Tony Hawk, who supports me and always pushing, always pushing me forward, so I appreciate this, and this is very, very nice to have, thank you.
All right, I'd like to call and order the City of New Franklin Council meeting. That's a weak joint in a quiet room.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic over which it stands, one nation, under government, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Could I get a motion for the approval of the minutes, please? I'm sorry. Roll call, please.
Mr. Katz?
Present.
Mr. Schaefer?
Here.
Mrs. Jones?
Present.
Mr. Powell?
Present.
Mr. Styles?
Present.
Mr. Wolf?
Present.
Mr. Amon?
Present.
Now, could I get a motion for the approval of this?
I will make a motion.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Styles?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Mr. Amon?
Yes.
Mr. Katz?
Yes.
All right, now we're getting into our public comment section of the meeting. I ask you to at least state your name, address, and if you would, just give it the four minutes, any public comments? All right?
I was trying to. Oh, oh, sorry.
Yeah, there's no surprise here, but, uh, Chris had approached me, uh, a week or two ago about some issues, and, you know, told me he should come and talk to you first.
Well, my name's Chris Beckett, I live on Odell, um, I have some neighbors here that live on Bayback, or.
South Face.
South, South Face. Um, so we live on, uh, a, a channel that ends into, uh, Nemo's Island. The channel is owned by, uh, the state of Ohio, although actually the, the water is. However, the majority of that channel is also a private, um, uh, portion that used to be blocked, that used to belong to Keppel Farms back in the fifties. Okay? So there's, uh, at the end of the channel, there's a large piece of property that is currently owned by a private individual. This, uh, island, if you would, has a series of trees. And these trees, the, the, the land keeps eroding, and these trees are falling three, four times a year. And so the last couple of years, we've been collectively, as neighbors, going out and cutting them up and pulling them out of the channel. Now, there's two different aspects to this whole issue. Uh, I live down the channel, and obviously, it, and that is my access to the rest of the Porridge Lakes, okay? So that's one, but the, however, we have individuals, it's Tony and Laura and Ayana, who live at, right across the island from us, and they have trees looming over their property. And we've just had some recent, uh, trees fall. I've been in contact, I have a history with the state, and I have a history with some of my previous employment, kind of a personal knowledge of, of, of tree law. The state of Ohio has disavowed essentially trees falling into their water. Okay? As far as this channel is concerned, I have looked up the, uh, original agreement from nineteen fifty-six. The only obligation that the state has is to maintain water flow. And that could be anything, they just have to maintain water flow. It has nothing to do with the trees looming over their property, um, and potentially hitting their homes, hitting their schools, hitting their walls, causing significant damage. And hopefully, a boat's not driving by when a tree falls, it potentially dings on somebody. Obviously, myself, mine is purely access to the water, which obviously, if I don't have access to the water, my, my house property is gonna drop significantly. We've been in contact, this is not our first step, we have been in contact with the owner, um, multiple, uh, and he has, uh, elected to not engage in conversation with us at the intention to come into a resolution with, uh, removing these trees. Uh, we just had a couple, um, one fall the other day, Tony's got some great pictures of it. Over the last couple of years, the state has been gracious enough, I have a connection with the state, um, they have, the first time, a couple of years ago, with, uh, Brian's assistants, uh, we were able to personally pull one out. One time, um, I talked to Rocky from O D N R, he just happened to have some, uh, grant money that he was able to hire somebody to come in and pull one out. We've, we've been in chainsaws and stuff and did this. In addition, um, the state has, you know, pretty much said, this, these are one-off events. We had one fall a couple of weeks ago, um, those of you who are familiar with the lakes, there's a barge, the dredger, Daisy the Dredger is out there. They happen to have a barge there that was left on it. Pure luck, it came and they were able to remove a, a tree that landed on somebody's, uh, crossed the channel on somebody's pro- property. Again, pure luck. It's going to happen, she's gonna have a tree fall in her bed, bed, it's going to happen. Um, they're gonna have a tree, they just put tons and tons of money into the brand of beautiful home, and it's going to destroy their entire property when these trees fall. So I don't come to you guys with problems with no solution. I've met with the mayor twice. My wife works for the city of Green in the Certs Department, and I'm not saying this is the final answer, this is just a, a potential solution. The city of Green, um, has a tree ordinance that they, um, have adopted, they've had it for several years, and like, is intimately involved with it. Um, basically, the mayor will be able to describe it a, a lot better, but the nuts and bolts of it is, basically, if, um, the city determines that the tree poses potential harm to people and your property, the city can come on and say, property owner, it's your responsibility to remove this, this tree. Now, as far as the city of Green is concerned, they work with the residents and whatnot, but ultimately, if it doesn't happen, the city then removes the tree and assesses the property owner. That's the nuts and bolts of it. Again, we met with the mayor twice on it, um, anything, and so, essentially, that's what I'm gonna propose, this is the problem that we are, are, are having. I know Tony and Laura here and Ayana's here, um, I have a list of about twenty to thirty residents on this channel that are very, very concerned of it. I didn't want to pack this, and this is the very first time, you want to be respectful on it, but, um, this isn't just us. I have a whole email list of everybody on the channel that is very concerned about this, so, thank you, Mayor.
Uh, if I may, I'm, uh, back in my office, minding my own business one day, uh, and here comes Chris, and I, I was sitting there at, at my desk, I was saying, I hope somebody walks in with another big problem. And sure enough, Chris came in, uh, and he talked to me about what was going on, and I said, and, and he talked to me about an ordinance that Green has, and they do have one. Uh, and, uh, you know, I can, I'll, I'll share all this down the road. Um, Green actually, well, the, the meat of it is, uh, that the city shall have the right to cause the removal of any dead or diseased tree on private property within the city when such trees constitute a hazard to life and property. So that's sort of the criteria. When he showed me that, I said, well, that's, you know, a little bit subjective, and, you know, it's a little touchy, how do you, you know, how do you implement this? But I, I was, you know, certainly willing to hear more about that. I did hear more about that, uh, and, you know, specific so far, just to what's going on in the water out there. That channel that comes from Nemo's Island, uh, the state has an easement through there until it hits the lake. Uh, and I think that's what, what Chris was alluding to. Um, I've seen photos of some of the, of some of the trees, I haven't reached out to the property owner, which I will, and I want to get past this, this point, to have this discussion. Uh, and, uh, that, I mean, the, the roots are bare, uh, the trees are leaning, and, uh, and if it goes, there's a real good chance it's gonna hit not just a seawall, but a house. Uh, and there are some others there as well. So, I'm, you know, the, how, how can the city address this problem? So, you know, how can the city address this problem? Green has this ordinance, so I'm not sure how this is looking, you know, how it's working for Green. I did have the benefit of talking with Chris's wife, who works with the Service Department. And they haven't had to invoke it that many times, but apparently it's worked pretty well out there. So I asked him to do a little bit more homework and get some, get some opinions relative to some of the trees, the worst of the trees on that island. And they're in the process of getting that from Arborist or a tree company or whatever. Then I intend to have a conversation with the owner of the island, at least as to those trees, as council considers whether they want to take further action through an ordinance. And I also said, you know, there's got to be other cities. I wonder what's going on in other cities. All right? And Chris's wife volunteered to take a look. And I have results of that, that Chris just handed to me. I have not reviewed any of these, but I'm looking at Brexville, Cogge Falls, City of Canton. I don't know if they all have the same provisions. City of Stowe, North Canton, Akron, Norton, and Wasworth.
Well, I'm sorry. May I ask a question?
Sure.
Did I understand you to say diseased or dead trees?
Well, that's what, that's what Green's ordinance says.
Okay.
All right. I don't know if the rest of these, whether or not it's limited to that. What's, you know, what jumps out is constitutes a hazard to life and property. So without an ordinance, I don't think the city has a part in this. This is private property. But I haven't, I don't know if you could somehow fashion it in one of the criminal ordinances that some agents, in any of it. I'm convinced that it's worth considering and I wanted, you know, and so I suggested that come to council and talk about it. I'll be happy to share all these and then let council decide. Meanwhile, whatever you do, as soon as I get a little bit more specific information on what we think are the worst of these trees, I am, I do intend to have a conversation with the owner and bring that to his attention. Perhaps we can get some interim help there, cooperation from the owner. But beyond that then, the next move, if the city's going to have involvement, would require an ordinance, it might be.
Is it vacant land?
It is.
Okay. And is the owner a New Franklin resident?
He is.
Does, does the island being in water, do we, does the city have jurisdiction over that island?
Is it a New Franklin parcel?
I'd say yes, yes.
Okay.
Is that land which goes out?
Right. It's part of, it's part of a deemed property. It's not, yeah. So we have jurisdiction.
I'm familiar with it.
So you mentioned that Green legislation mentions diseased or dead tree.
Right.
How does that impact, because when I hear that, I'm thinking, okay, if the tree's dead or diseased and it's got a risk, then you can remove it. In this case, it sounds like the trees are still alive, but the roots are coming exposed and they're uprooting. So how do you have that address their situation when it's almost two separate things?
I don't know the answer to that. I think that would depend on what the definition of diseased is and whether or not, and I don't see that in a statute. I haven't studied these yet. So I think that's something, I haven't looked at the other statutes either. So I'm interested in what the other, what the owners have to say on that. I don't know that it, I don't know that it would necessarily require evidence of disease. I mean, it seems to me what jumps out is the risk of harm. Maybe imminent would be a nice word to have in there.
Yeah, I don't think as any tree is, if, you know, a healthy tree's a risk of harm if it gets blown down in tornadoes.
So there's a lot to discuss. There, there's a lot to discuss.
Do you have all this, any of this contact information?
I can provide that to you.
Well, since I said my word, before we go and get all of something about war, maybe give me this information, then we go and see if I can have a conversation with you.
Sure.
That'd be fun. Has anybody sent him a certified letter saying any of your trees pose a danger, or pose a risk of damage?
No. As far as I'm aware, no. There's been two or three people that I spoke with that have had conversations, either face to face and/or texts. And probably given the details very blatant, that just is what it is.
I got to skin their shoulders now.
So, I mean, so the, the attempt has been there, sir. But as far as the certified letter, I know the insurance companies and the state of Ohio law basically puts these individuals at a pro, I'm sorry, as a reactive. Basically, yeah, it's all good. After it, it falls. Well, when she's laying in her bedroom, that, you know, tree falls through her, well, so that is where I go. The attempt has been there, face to face and communicate, as far as texts and stuff like that. The certified letter, no?
All right. I would send him a certified letter, let him know if that's, poses a danger. Send me his information. Kevin and I will run over there. And maybe just a, because we sit on council, I'm not saying we can make miracles happen, but maybe they'll get the idea that this is going to not go away before we have to go and do something extravagant.
Yeah. What I would suggest is perhaps the three of us have a conversation and determine the most effective way to make the approach. And so why don't we do that?
It was already, yeah. Look at it off the waters.
Yeah, I thought it would be helpful to have some idea of possible and, you know, highlight some specific trees. Because there's a lot of trees in that area. And if you, if you wanted them all down, you'd be talking about more than $100,000. If there's three or four trees that would, you know, it'd be nice to remove, it'd be nice to have an opinion and then, which I think we can pretty easily get.
Yeah, we'll, we'll work on it.
And then get some, you know, some cost assessment and say, hey, listen, while we're having the other conversation, it's sort of, be more specific with them. And so that's really where, that's, that's the only delay in this thing is to gather that information, but I'll be happy to coordinate with both of you.
Is that property for sale?
It was at one time.
It was at one time.
It was.
Or the paper.
Correct.
Okay. But, oh, same, same owner?
Yes.
Just to add, we're looking to remove the threats, which when you, normally when you hear tree removal, we think big cost, and it is, because our property, we've taken down a number of trees and it's, it's tens of thousands of dollars. However, the threat is just them, those trees falling in the water, falling on our property, boats, you know, newly established seawalls and whatnot. Doesn't mean that the tree has to be removed, cut off, hollowed away, shrub and whatnot. It just needs to be cut and it can be thrown back onto the island. This vacant five acre land that's doing nothing, it's just sitting there. So it is still a cost to have somebody do that, but just, I personally, I don't think it's that $3,000, $4,000 a tree to have part of the tree come out and remove the whole thing and stuff. I mean, we're not looking for that. We're just going to cut the tree down and lay it on the land as opposed to laying on the water in our property.
You need to provide your name and住址.
I'm sorry. Anthony Cola.
Could you spell your last name, please?
C O L A N Z.
Thanks.
Sorry.
Yeah?
Thank you.
Is there a number of our business?
Ayana Hughie, Judy, my address is long.
Yeah, sure.
I'm sorry, your name? Ayana Hughie, from the South Bay Drive. Thank you. Yes. So this is with respect to a potential ordinance. At some point, should that become a reality for us? That dead and diseased is part of it, but dead, diseased and unsafe would be really helpful. We have kids, kayakers, there are pontoons, the Lord coming and going. There's quite a lot of wildlife. You have bordering into the land by multiple different kinds of wildlife and that's actually causing some of the trees to come down. They're coming down on sunny days, blue skies, no wind. And they're just keeling over. So it's partly the wildlife. We can't really do anything about the wildlife, but we can do something about the trees and the safety issue is really the biggest issue. Like I can replace my house. I cannot replace my spouse.
Anyone else? We'll take all that into consideration and we're going to work with the mayor and look at some options.
Thanks for that. That looks good.
That's very helpful.
With that, we're going to close the public comments. We're going to enter into our first reading. Kelly?
An ordinance to adopt the revised New Franklin Personnel Policies and Procedures Manual and declaring an emergency.
Oh. This ordinance came to, this ordinance came from the Laws and Ordinances Committee and I am going to request more time.
Time is requested, time is granted. Resolution 24R52, Kelly?
A resolution authorizing New Franklin to enter into agreements with 83 Construction and Ace Ready Mix LLC for the construction and installation of a salt storage bin and declaring that this resolution shall be effective immediately upon passage.
This resolution is assigned to the Finance Committee. We move away the three readings on Resolution 24R52.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Stiles?
Yes.
Mr. Wook?
Yes.
Mr. Aman?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
We move to adopt Resolution 24R52.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Stiles?
Yes.
Mr. Wook?
Yes.
Mr. Aman?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Resolution passes 70. Resolution 24R51, Kelly?
A resolution authorizing the mayor to execute the revised Summit County Intergovernmental Memorandum of Understanding for Job Creation and Retention in Tax Revenue Sharing and declaring an emergency.
This resolution came before Community Development Committee. We're going to ask for time on Resolution 24-R51.
Time is requested, time is granted. Ordinance 24R71?
An ordinance to amend Articles 8 and 14 of the New Franklin Zoning Code.
This ordinance came before the Laws and Ordinances Committee and there was a public hearing that has to occur on September 4th. So we are going to ask for more time.
Time is requested and time is granted. We've got no third readings, no pending legislation. Onto our favorite part, the mayor's work.
All right, all right. Always looking for that. Magic word. Okay, let's see. Several things, but we'll try to go through them quickly. First of all, we did get, there's another matter that has made its way through Planning and Zoning for a conditional use permit for here for your child development center. And Planning and Zoning has recommended a conditional use permit for that center, which to be located at 6105 Manchester Road. And what is required next is a public hearing. So I would ask council to set that for public hearing at the next meeting, Wednesday, August 21st. And we can get the, well, actually we have the notified parties, but I don't think there's a, there's not a public, the service, yeah, we've got a publication.
Did we get a publication?
Yeah. We'll make sure we can get it.
The board is having to get that information.
Already, working on that. Good, okay. All right. Next, cemetery rules. Nothing happens fast and there are a lot of things that needed to be, to happen. And as we, in a sense, can send you the transition from township surprisingly. So cemetery rules was one of those things. And they needed to rework and again, a great deal of time is spent on this with our cemetery section, who is also our Deputy Service Director and his staff. And I shouldn't mention Courtney, who's done a fabulous job. And then the administrative staff as well, a thorough review of the cemetery rules and regulations. And I mean thorough, multiple, multiple meetings, multiple, multiple drafts, trying to get it right. A lot of it has to do, similar to the policy manuals, reorganization, some of it was updating. And then there was a extensive discussion relative to fees. And probably mostly not everybody in our council is aware that our cemetery fees were ridiculously low. As a result of this, we, we became, I think, attractive for people who just wanted an economical place to bury as opposed to the residents themselves. So that fee structure then, there was a lot of work that had studied that went into that to try to make a comparative to what's going on around the county. And that is included in there as well. So I sent these out to you, I think a week or two, a couple of weeks ago. It is an administrative function to adopt these rules, but I want a council to have a look. And if there's any questions or concerns, anybody who wants to share, I haven't heard from anybody to this point, but if there's anything that you want to share at this point, please do, because otherwise we're going to, we'll adopt these. And I want to get that accomplished because we have a variety of people who put a moratorium on sales while we were going through this, because we didn't want to fire someone on that. And so we've got a list of people that are waiting to proceed with purchase at the revised rates.
I reviewed, I thought they looked, I think it was long overdue. And as you said, the, the cost of, for the non-resident and resident grave sites was ridiculous of a load. I'm not saying we're looking to charge residents more money, but it wasn't even competitive with, with other competing cemeteries. So, and the residents still have a much greater discount than a non-resident. But one of the, I think the target or one of the initiatives of this is to stop, as you said, the fire sale of the grave site, because we've only got so many sites to sell.
But I also thought the pricing was very reasonable.
It is.
Don't you remember?
It deserves it.
Uh huh. So I didn't think that it was, I didn't think it was out of line at all. I thought it was very reasonable.
And if it preserved the discount for, the discount rate for residents. All right. Well, we'll proceed with that. We'll, I'll sign out tomorrow and have a little place. There, I know several of you have been involved in further discussions and there are going to be further discussions relative to the cemetery. And space is limited. And so we're going to have to, and some things have changed in terms of, you know, what people require. So Brian has kept himself very conversant in that. We're going to proceed with a survey of the existing cemetery to determine exactly where our boundaries are, what room we have for expansion on that footprint. I know there's been discussions and suggestions about perhaps trying to acquire some adjoining land. So we're going to move forward on all that and we'll keep you posted. And we'll intend you to invite your involvement on that. All right. The, let's see, so we're trying to move these codes along and our code of, of statutes, I've mentioned to you before, we're close on that. The final piece is, well, there's two final pieces. One is zoning and I think we've decided that we'll go ahead and when we're ready to adopt the rest of it, we will wait for the full revision of the zoning code. We'll, when we're ready to hit the go button on this, we'll go with whatever the current, whatever had to that point had been approved by council as far as the revisions. For instance, you're going to be looking at revisions on Article 8 and 14 on September 4th. But the criminal code and the traffic code, we're trying to find, find the best way to present that to you for review. And at one time I thought, well, we'll have some workshops in here and go through this. I take a deep breath because that would take forever. And just like that, okay? I mean, the DUI statute is nine pages long. So, you know, for you to take a look at that and then say, well, you're really not so sure about this and, you know, maybe, maybe it ought to be .075 instead of .08 and, you know, how do we feel about following too closely? It could really be a laborious task. And so what I've talked with Chief Beckett and what the intention is, is to present these to you, you have them, but present them a couple of chapters at a time, starting with the traffic code. Get them onto you, look through them, see if you have questions. We can't, we are, we can't do something more liberal than the revised code when it comes to criminal statutes. But we may choose to adopt or not adopt, or we can change some terminology maybe. I guess what I should say is, other than one or two, I don't see, I haven't seen anything in there that we want to do anything differently than the Ohio revised code is. So I don't mean to be, to speak too long on this, but it just so happens, unlike, you know, the, the tax law, I did this for 40 years, okay? I was going to say it doesn't make me an expert, but it does. So, and I've done all the review work on it. So I don't, I don't think that we're going to want to be in the business of trying to rewrite the revised code on traffic and criminal laws. But on the other hand, we don't want to just say, here they all are, give a general scan. So we'll start getting it to you, a couple of chapters at a time, ask you to look through it, ask you to communicate concerns as to any specific statutes. Maybe a question can be answered back and forth. Maybe a question can be answered back and forth that would satisfy it, maybe not. Maybe, okay, on this section, okay, this orderly kind of, we got concerns on that, fine. Now we know one section, let's keep moving. And then try to gather the group when we know, you know, a list of anyone that people have concerns about. I fully expect that most of them are gonna say, yeah, that's what we thought the law was, or this is what it's written, and so we're gonna try, we'll get that moving and try to get through that in that fashion.
So, we're under the Ohio revised code now?
Yes.
So nothing's changed, so why couldn't we just say, we adopt it in one fell swoop for financial reasons? And I'd like, if you could tell why we would do that. Then, if there's anything that we don't like, I mean, we're not really changing anything, we're taking the law, what's the problem with something like that?
There really isn't. I mean, in essence, that's what we'll be doing, and it just gets renumbered under our statutes. And then we charge under our code, which is what, it's not, it's not the right thing, because everybody does it, but that's what everybody does, okay? And then also, when fines come, they come to the city, then go to the state.
So as of right now, currently, with the Ohio revised code, the city doesn't benefit from the fines, who does?
The state.
So if we have our own city law, we keep the fines.
Exactly, yeah, yeah. So it may not be, it may not take that long. So we'll start getting those out to you, and we'll take a look and try to funnel through those as effectively as we can. Alright, let's see, we already talked about hazardous tree ordinance. A couple kind of fun things. I got a really nice card from Chaplain Edmund Fast, and Ed, we honored at the Memorial Day, and just what a wonderful, wonderful, wonderful gentleman. I wanted to thank the Mayor Paul and the committee and council for the honor underlying the big New Franklin grand marshal for May of twenty twenty-four. And he put in parentheses, I thought I had mailed this already, so. Thank you, Ed, I hope you get to see this in one of the person. Alright, also, in the order of really nice things. Randy R.C. Norris passed away in October of two thousand nineteen. And he was, he was, continues to be a legend out here in New Franklin, out in Portage Lakes area. I'll just kind of run through this proclamation, they're having a celebration of life on Saturday. So I thought it'd be nice if we presented a proclamation to him. I did not ask his children to be here for this, but I kind of wanted to surprise them. And then I will contact them after, you know, tomorrow, next day, and see when would be a good time for us to present this, this is an event over the weekend. And the proclamation says that whereas Randy R.C. Norris was born February twenty-first, nineteen twenty-seven, passed away October twenty-ninth, two thousand nineteen, I won't read it verbatim, was an icon and a legend in New Franklin, beginning at an early age as a Boy Scout for Troop Thirty-two canoeing and camping. Served in the military in World War Two, came home, graduated from Youngstown State, law degree from the University of Akron, top of his class in fifty-three. Tenacious advocate, brilliant order, one of the best trial lawyers in the state of Ohio. I can tell you that that's true. Whereas later in life, kept busy with a second career renovating Dusty's Landing and nursing himself in Portage Lakes community. He purchased it, developed the property along with his son Mark, and continued to practice law with his daughter Andrea, who served on this board for a number of years, and still will turn him like a father. Became the unofficial resident historian of Portage Lakes, and that was it. Want to know something about the history out here, he was the guy. Effectively called the Mark Twain of Portage Lakes, and when he started the cemetery, that's what he was. So this is really, and he was instrumental in the Portage Lakes Fireworks Association, in starting the Portage Lakes Fireworks. And he, his legacy lives on with his sons Randy and Mark, his daughters Gail and Andrea, their families, et cetera. Whereas the celebration of life is gonna be held on Saturday. Now therefore, in recognition, we are asking, we would like to declare Saturday, August tenth, twenty twenty-four, as R.C. Norris Day in the city of New Franklin. So I'd ask for a motion to do just that.
I'll make a motion.
Mr. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones? Mr. Powell? Mr. Stiles?
Yes.
Mr. Look?
Yes.
Mr. Allman?
Yes.
Alright, excellent, but we'll coordinate, we have a really nice frame for this, and we'll coordinate that and arrange for some council members to present that on Saturday. Alright, listen, we have, we are gonna need an executive session, as you know. And we're gonna need our attorney in there, and this guy's charged by the hour, so. I've been a little loquacious, but I'll try to, because I probably have about fifteen, twenty minutes, I think, if we want the dragon boat. I'm not pointing this towards the road we have purpose. Chris, you stay out of the boat, I don't want you in that boat next year. Anyway, our dragon boat team, one, are not just our vision, but had the two fastest times in the entire tournament. And two of our council people were in the boat.
Three?
Three of our council people. Oh, yeah, yeah, nice bit of replacement, Eric. Jumped in at the last minute. So Mr. Stiles, Mr. Allman, and Mr. Powell, all were in the boat as they set those record times. And this is the lovely trophy that we have.
I was thinking of a plaque for every presentation. Plus hundred duress.
A wonderful event, and we're the host city, and we've embraced it, and they've embraced us, and it just grows each year, so. And we thank for all the support, the financial support to put that team together, so. We'll be out there next year showing the fan our title. Alright, and let's see, the Tudor House Barbecue, we already talked about that. We had our last, our second movie night, our second music night, excuse me. About a couple weeks ago, had over a hundred people there for that. And next Tuesday is our second movie, Goonies. Yeah, I know, but they know where it is. Anyway, so Goonies, apparently, it's just a wonderful movie, and that's, that'll be the movie on Tuesday, and then there'll be another movie, a music night, Motown Music Night at the end of the month for, that's all the time. So that's what's going on, that's all of that.
Financial reports, Tim?
Just, I wanted to bring up speed that others were there this week, and on Monday, they told us that they are finishing up, should be done by the end of next month. So we're looking forward to that. Also, a reminder about fraud training, and a thank you for all of you who have already done it and turned in your paperwork, for anybody who hasn't, and that's employees as well. Please get that into us, to Diane as soon as possible, there are two things. Your certificate off of the website, and also the certification that says you received all that information, so. Just another reminder. Any other, as we always, as I always remind you too, with public records training, please make sure you get that done as well. You need to do that every, every time you're elected for that for your term. And then always, Ohio Ethics Law, always a good, a good practice to get your certificate in there. And that's all I have for today.
And I gotta jump in again. We got another forty thousand dollars. Yeah. Courtesy of some kind of sheriff, Candy Fothery, teamed with the US Congresswoman, Amelia Sykes, and obtained a grant for just under a million dollars for police cruisers. And in conjunction with Stark County Sheriff as well. And the intention then, as Sheriff Fothery mentioned, was to try to, they wanted to get one for every municipality and township, and there just weren't enough. So she decided to favor the smaller communities that she felt had a greater need. And so we had, there was a little, it wasn't a ribbon cutting, but we were, it's a picture-taking, a ceremony on Monday, and the city will receive a little bit over forty-two thousand dollars towards a cruiser. And as you know, we rotate the cruisers, do two one year, one the next year, so. That's just another, another big lift. So we want to thank Sheriff Candy Fothery and Congresswoman Amelia Sykes.
Next portion is old business, anybody have anything you'd like to bring up, discuss?
I think I have old new business, because the signs for the farmer's market, beautiful.
Oh, good.
Thank you. We do need more vendors though. This is something that everyone said they wanted, I shouldn't say everyone, should I? Overstatement. A lot of people wanted, but now we need you to participate, and I am jumping heads if you come in. So we need more vendors, and we need more people buying, so please come. I am gonna say it again, new business too. Like I said, I tell you.
One of the things I have on our rule business is, back when we were looking at the budget, at the end of last year, we talked about buying two plow trucks. I hadn't heard anything new on that, as to where we are at that process. But I know we talked about the option of potentially, we're the lease owner, or basically a finance versus our environment. As everybody knows, these are expensive vehicles, we're two hundred and sixty, two hundred and seventy thousand dollars per unit. We're looking to get two of them, and the whole reason, we want to keep our fleet in good operating shape. And also, there's such a lead time to get these vehicles, and there's up to a year potentially before you can actually receive one of these. I know, like I said, we haven't talked on anything. I didn't know if we could look at financing options, I reached out to a company that I deal with. I was able to get, and this is just ballpark numbers, I got something from them, with a four, or five, or six-year option. And I had them give me options where option A would be, if we lease or finance one truck, and we decide another way to pay for the other truck, you know, amongst council and finance, or if we outright finance both trucks. So I've got both of those options, so I can give that to you, you can write. Essentially, the interest rate on it is like five point seven roughly for four years, five point six for five, and just under five, six for six years. Essentially, if you, if you lease, finance one truck, you're gonna be spending about nine thousand a year in finance charges. But what that does, it doesn't hit your general fund hard the first year. So I didn't know if council had any thoughts on that, I'd like to hear from Sue, if you could, and what your thoughts are.
Yeah, well, first of all, I want you to know that consistent with what was discussed, and then I'll turn it over to you, that with what was discussed during the budget meetings, because it was discussed during the budget meetings, did council, would they prefer that we purchase them outright or finance them? And the message at that time was to finance those. And so, to that end, the vehicles have been ordered, I believe they're both in, they're being outfitted at this point in time. And so we're at that stage of it with the financing. And, you know, we had conversations with our Deputy Service Director about, do we want to try to outright purchase them? That was not the direction we received when we had the budget meetings. And so we've been shopping as well, as far as interest rates. But I'm thrilled, you have some additional information, so we'll throw that in the mix. Another potential lender, but Ms. Cook, you want to speak further on that?
Yeah, we had some original contact with the company that handles it, and got the, awarded the bid contract for the state. So we had some contact with them to get rates. We also got, had another company that came to, came to our attention for rates, and we got rates on them. The lowest we have right now is five-year interest rate of about five point four five, I believe, is what he told us, was the lowest one we've got. And we haven't had time to sit down and go over this, all this yet, because we were just getting the information together. And then Mayor and I talked about sitting down with Brian and going over everything that we have, and making decisions. We've got applications and all that kind of stuff from everyone we've talked to.
This has been over about the last two weeks.
Yeah, I just wanted to bring it up, because I mean, there's no better time than, because if we're gonna bring that, you have to talk with everybody. Just get a status of it, if there's something we can do to help, or maybe there's a, if you guys want to look in another direction, and we'll be going to discuss that.
Yeah, no, it came, this bank from Louisville, I think, yeah, reached out, and we, and we shot their rate, and we did some due diligence to check them out, and they are who they say they are. So there's a good chance that's who we'll end up with, but it's just a matter of fine lines. And meanwhile, the trucks are being outfitted, so we're gonna have them in time for winter, so. And I think, the intention, then, consistent with what we talked about, the budget, we'll go ahead and, you know, and take that hit, but even the finance charge, but I think it's, the last thing we were waiting to hear from the bank was whether or not, any penalty for prepayment.
Yeah, and they got back to us on both, both the main companies we looked at, there was no penalty for prepayment.
So if we decide at some point in time to do a buyout for the balance of it, we can spare the interest at that point.
And I'm not sure if they're gonna do a deferred payment, first payment, we do next budget cycle, if they're wanting it before, and there's a ton of options which would, that could benefit us potentially. So that's good, thanks, thanks for getting on that. I've got another rule business, anybody else? New business?
Again, I'm going to mention farmer's market, you didn't think I do, I did you, Carol. I can see her saying, oh, don't let me see. I am gonna do it, because we need more vendors, and we need more participants, please.
Where is the farmer's market?
It's right here. Greg, you have a venue?
That's all thrown a softball.
I know, and I love it, and I take it and sending it back to you.
I knew exactly where it was, I wanted to make sure.
So will you come next Thursday? No, you won't, because you're gonna be at the barbecue, but you'll come the following Thursday, yes. But it's Thursdays from three until seven, and it's right here at City Hall. We have, we have quite a few vendors that come, and there's so many different things. Fresh produce is excellent, and we have a lot of baked goods, and I bought a tomato plant, so we'll see how that goes, I'm not sure, we're waiting, we're waiting. But they have a lot of nice vendors, really good food, so please come and try it, we would love to have you.
You got a new business? I'd like to mention our second annual Touch a Truck. We've got this scheduled to take place on August thirty-first, nine AM to twelve PM, right out here in the parking area. And ironically enough, there's another event going on about the same time. It's the Boy Scouts, it's gonna have their pancake breakfast, actually, it's a full breakfast, buffet style, and that actually will take place same day at the New Franklin Global Church from seven thirty AM to eleven AM. So if you would, make sure to put that on your calendar and come out and join us.
And Touch a Truck is from nine until?
Nine until noon on Touch a Truck.
Fine, okay, so you gave them breakfast and then do Touch a Truck?
Yes, and we have all the police and fire and service, we have some stuff out there, O D and R is gonna be there, and State Patrol and.
I think we're doing popcorn that day too.
The other thing I just want to mention is, they did a great job in the service yesterday. They, we had, as you know, some inclement weather, and they did a great job, they can raise open back up. Everything came through quickly. That's all I have for new business, anybody else? Alright, any public comments, any additional ones? Anything maybe you heard tonight, or something you maybe forgot to say? On the ones? Alright, close public comments, we need to have an executive session.
Yes, I asked for an executive session to, for reviewing negotiations relative to bargaining sessions with public employees. I would ask to have invited in our labor attorneys, our finance director, and our police chief.
Mr. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Stiles?
Yes.
Mr. Look?
Yes.
Mr. Allman?
Yes.